I called the patent township board of supervisors, May 25th, 2022, meeting at 5:30 to order. Before we begin, can we get a moment of silence for the families of the innocent lives lost from the Uvalde Elementary School shooting? Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family and the community at this time. Next on the agenda are announcements. We all, especially the new patent township residents, we welcome all patent, new patent township residents to the patent township community, a place for all. I would also like to take this time to thank the Penn Highlands Healthcare. We had a groundbreaking ceremony, thanks to Betsy and Alexandra for attending that wonderful presentation of a new groundbreaking hospital in the patent township location. So without further ado, Doug, do we have any?
No, we do not have any announcements.
Okay. As you are able, please rise and join the board in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is additions to the posted agenda. Are there any items that the supervisors would like to add at this time? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to public comments. Residents, taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to a specific agenda item should be deferred until that point of the meeting. If you are attending by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature on the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and defer from using any profanity, derogatory, or any offensive language, abbreviations, or gestures during the meeting. Respect is always given by this board and expect the same. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Are there any public comments at this time? Sir?
Yes, my name is Rod Kayak. How are you doing today, guys? Everybody doing good, I hope? Okay, so I'm not very fluent, obviously, at putting everything together, but I'm gonna try to sum it and hopefully in five minutes. So I'm back again here about the Green Hollow issue, but before I start, I love your opening when you said patent township are welcoming everybody. I honestly don't feel that. Even if it's a good opening statement, I'd like to feel that, and I'd like to be heard, actually, because last time seems to me we are not heard. I talked to Doug today. I would not envy this person about his job. I actually, I didn't think he will pay me enough to get his job, but thank you for responding to me in timely manner and everything. Really appreciate it, Doug, just to put that on the record. So I'm back again, like I said, for Green Hollow issue. I don't know what are the basis we limit this park to 5:00 p.m. when the summer is coming, okay? People are leave work at 4:30 to go and enjoy, actually, that park. Now, keep in mind, parks are open, just like any, just like any park, okay? If I'm buying next to a park, next to a swimming pool, next to a golf course, whatever the circumstance is, I know what I'm in for, okay? So it shouldn't be unique to anybody, like I'm living close to a park, was a tennis, and now converted to a pickleball. Having converted that into a pickleball, and we use our tax money, which really is important, okay? When we are paying those taxes, we're obviously trusting few of you, you are making that decision for us. And now I feel that trust, it's not in the right place, to be honest with you. When you are feeling you are gonna close that, even you spent about eighty to a hundred thousand, where are you gonna spend another hundred thousand somewhere else to put another court? I don't know who actually gives you the right to do that, to be honest with you. You know, we work hard for our money, you work for hard, your money, I'm sure, and when you raise those taxes on us, it's not a good thing, you know? Just because we are making some of that decision. We are making decision based on few of the complaining people. And unfortunately, some of those neighbors, one of them was part of this board, okay, which I don't feel it is correct at all, to be honest with you. But I wanna, because I wanna use my time, utilize my time as equally as possible here. Based on the survey, if you look at the survey we have done, so I'm looking at the survey here, and a lot of the high number, it's between two o'clock and five o'clock, they wanna use that park. And the other high number is from five to eight o'clock, if it's permitted. So those are the two high number. I don't know why we are closing it at five o'clock. I just witnessed the other day myself, a family of four, with two kids, actually, coming over to enjoy that park, until I told them and said, be careful, that park closed at five o'clock. And they looked at me and said, there is a sign down there, you could read it. Is that what we wanna do, really, for the community? I, I think I would really would love for you to revisit this, because I feel it's wrong. This is a park, you know? The people at the golf course, and I indicated that in the past, one of my friends who lived there, who, his window broke twice from a golf ball. You know what? They didn't change the hour, they didn't close that golf course, it's still operational, you know? It's part of living there. And the person who was complaining, he said, this is my house and my investment. I, I agree with him. It did not affect, as a matter of fact, the price of this house actually even went higher. So if we don't like to be there, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be mean or anything, this is a choice for us. If you don't like it, you could move somewhere else, and I'm sure that house, somebody else will buy that house. But to deprive over about 200 people to actually build a community over there and enjoy something they love, and the, the decision is in your hand, you are depriving us. And I appreciate the time you opened for us, but I don't understand why we are not open it until eight o'clock, until since the other park gonna open up for us later on. Even they are gonna open, I really believe you should reconsider this. Okay, thank you. You should reconsider this. We, you are wasting a taxpayer money. Really, that should be a high consideration. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you listening to me.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other person? Sir?
Hi, Wayne Wall. I was just wondering if we could get something scheduled for an update on the Burnell Courts, if we are still gonna transition those, because I've been out there, nothing's happened yet. And I thought, I thought the timeline we were looking at was April, May, for that to happen. So I just wondered if we can get something scheduled on an agenda for a future meeting to get a community update on the status of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
I don't know if now's the time. I wanted to comment on the Gainer Drive Parklet. Did you want me to wait on that?
We'll have a separate discussion at that point. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Supervisor?
Can we ask Doug to clarify the opening or the closing time on Green Hollow Park? I thought the closing time, five, was just related to playing pickleball and not the whole park.
Correct, yeah. Just only pickleballs restricted time-wise. The other facilities in the park are open until dusk.
And I, I feel personally, I'd like to respond to your comments, because I don't know if you observed any of the board meetings last year when we were having this discussion. The, the attempt of the, of our, of the supervisors that were here at the time, Mr. Gruder was not a member of the board at that time, was to find a compromise, because the nature of the noise generated by four pickleball courts in use simultaneously was not something that we had anticipated when, before we put those courts out. We, no one was aware that this would create that kind of a noise nuisance. The recommendation, actually, I don't recall, Anita Tees was a supervisor at the time, she, she found the research. The recommendation that she located was that if you're putting in a pickleball court, it should be a minimum 500 feet away from the nearest residence. And our pickleball courts are within a hundred and whatever, 120, 130, 50 feet of the nearest houses. So that was well with inside the recommended buffer zone. So that's where we came up with this compromise. We would build pickleball courts in Burnell Road Park, use two of those courts, tennis courts, to put in five pickleball courts. And then once those were completed, we would then reconvert back to tennis, the two, or the courts that were in Green Hollow Park. As far as timeline, I think Doug can answer that. I think the construction company should be starting fairly soon.
Yeah, we can expect them to start sometime soon, but we, I, I will just, to not give anybody any false hopes, let's say mid-July. And by, by mid-July, at the latest, we should have those courts ready in Burnell Road Park.
To play in July, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
To play in July, or?
To play in July. And then at that point, we would close the one in Green Hollow.
Supervisor Abrams?
I understand the comment about the golf course, but having been there when that course opened, and then when that housing development came in, the university put in a driving range, which was open till nine or 10 p.m., had lights. And when that development was put in, the residents there objected to the driving range, even though it had been there first. And so the university closed the driving range at dusk, and so their money was wasted on the, the lights because of this protest.
Okay, any other supervisor? Supervisor LaBrutick?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was clarity that the Green Hollow Park is open past five o'clock. It's just that the pickleball courts are closed at five o'clock.
Green Hollow Park.
Green Hollow Park, sorry. Is that clear?
Right, that's correct. That's what I'm saying. Why aren't we extending those hours?
For the pickleball courts?
The pickleball courts. Because based on the survey, if you look at the survey, it was done in November, November 1st. So of course, people don't wanna be there. I wish you to have me the opportunity, actually, this is the most comfortable, I feel. I was standing there, I was shaking, for, now I really feel comfortable. All what I was saying, the survey was that in November. November, yes, after eight o'clock, nobody's gonna be there, probably will be freezing. But now we are heading into the summer, where people wants to enjoy that time. Nobody wants to stay from two to four o'clock. It is gonna be hot, we know that. We, we don't want somebody to pass out. What we just had, if somebody passed out, add that one, you know, because that week and Saturday was so long. So I'm saying, why aren't we extending those hours? I just feel personally, I could be paranoid. I think there's some biases against, like, the pickleball. Might get blamed on that court, baseball, you know, with Ross Rhodes killed and all those people, we think, and where they're partying on the side, we used to park a car, a car, a car, a car. Right now, because somebody in this neighborhood, which again, I've been connected to that court, you don't even park my car right there, you know? And we are giving that person the power right now, which is happening. Almost like two minutes after five o'clock, people are already done leaving the pickleball court. The police are, are coming, you know? Because he's, I think it's wrong, honestly, it is wrong.
Let, let me explain to you, before, and I thank you for your time, and we have to move on. But there is no bias. Let, let me.
I said my own.
Well, I'm glad you're, you're sitting, you're feeling comfortable now, that you can feel that we hear you, we hear you. And, and thank you, we'll get you that information, sir.
And we are family. I feel we are part of the families. We should work together, to be honest with you, for the, for the common good.
I, I appreciate that.
For the common good, that's all.
Supervisor Abrams?
If I'd have known this would come up, I would have proposed another, an addition to the agenda, not for tonight, but for the next one. Like, yes, I can do that anyway, for the next one, suggesting that we revisit the closing time of the pickleball courts, because last summer, we stated that, that new pickleball courts might be open by the start of summer, or not. And so I think we should extend the hours. That's just my opinion.
If I, if I could just ask one question, is last fall, you voted, you voted and established the hours of 11 to 5?
Can you come up to the mic so we?
I'm sorry.
And I, I hate to be long in this, but.
Again, I'm Wayne Wall. Last fall, you established the hours of 11 to 5, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday. And those were posted and voted on from October 1st until March 13th. And then in March 13th, the sign went up that said, these are the permanent hours. And I saw no agenda or vote or anything that that happened, that they just became the established permanent hours. And we, in the pickleball community that use Green Hollow, were expecting an opportunity to come in and say, hey, we really are being limited, we can't play after hours. I mean, I'm a working man, I'm not retired, I'm not, not fortunate yet. But, so we really thought we were gonna get at least another opportunity to try and get some time. Like Rod pointed out, I was one of the people that voted for the four to seven timeframe, because that's after work and I can come and play there. And so we were hoping to get another chance to voice that, and then all of a sudden, they became permanent hours. And we didn't understand that. So I think that's a little bit of the dis.
Discommunication.
Yeah.
Doug, can we?
Thank.
Hold on, sir. Thank you. Let us, give, give us a minute, and, and we'll get back to you. I want to move on with our agenda. Can we?
Elliot's motion?
Hold on, hold on, Elliot, for a minute. Before this board, and I do remember each one of us voted on the time that we now have. And for us to keep going back and forth is just gonna change the, the dynamics of this. So what, I'm gonna take a vote on, on this. So any of the supervisors would like to discuss this again, please let me know right now. I'm, all right. Supervisor Trabino, you wanna?
Yes, my vote is yes.
All right.
Yes.
Ellen?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll clear on the next agenda.
Yes.
Go.
That's, that'll be in, what, three weeks?
June 15th, I believe. The third Wednesday in June.
Thank you, and we are addressing it.
I can't thank you enough. Thank you for very much for really considering. Appreciate it. Like I said, really, we need to work together as a family.
Thank you both. Supervisor Whitman?
And Mr. Kayak, Mr. Wall, I'm trying to remember names. Thank you again for coming. I might suggest, in the future, situation like this, if you would notify the board before the meeting with a couple of dates noticed, then we would have the ability of putting something. You did, okay. Okay, it usually works. We, we try and have conversation.
Thank you, moving right along. Next on the agenda is the presentation of a public hearing in Gainor Drive Parklet encroachment. Doug?
Thank you. I'll go over the history of this issue and give you the recommendations that I have received from our insurance carrier and our legal, our township solicitor. And then we'll turn it over to Ms. Molly to give you her thoughts, and then we'll go back to the board for question and answer and discussion. So in mid-April, as noted, we did receive an anonymous letter from a Greyswoods resident, is how it was signed, that something was going on in part of the Greyswoods Parklet. So staff went out there at that point and found that somebody, and we identified it as the adjacent landowner, had installed various tires and sticks and other things to create some sort of play environment for children in the parkland. This is, as shown on the, on the map, is part of the Gainor Drive Parklet that abuts the road out at, out along Gainor Drive, and then runs behind houses there on Gainor Drive, in the 200 block of Gainor Drive, and the 100 block of Whisper Rich Drive. So staff went out and looked, and we found the stuff that had been placed in the parklet. And as we do when we find things like this, we notify the homeowner that this is public property, and they should remove their, their property from it, because it is parkland and managed by the township for the, for the good of everybody. The homeowner, there were several pictures were included in both the notice of the letter we sent, and there were some drawing, subdivision drawings to give you more information. Now, the homeowner, Ms. Chelsea Molly, had responded that she wanted a chance to talk to the board and let her have an opportunity to maintain the, the improvements that she made to the parklet. In a follow-up with that, I did talk with our insurance agent, oh, a couple other things that we did. Now, to make sure that way everyone was confident where the property lines were between the private property and public parkland, we did hire a professional surveyor to go out and mark those property lines. I haven't been out there to look, but if, if we need to, we'll make the markings more prominent, so everyone's aware where the property line is. We, there was a enclosure, and it's attached as part of the timeline, that the surveyor had sketched in some of those improvements and shown that they, yes, are on the, are on the park property. Last week, I did reach out to our insurance agent and ask them, you know, what should, what should we be doing? His response is that we should advise, as we already had, that, that the property owner remove the improvements. And if they aren't removed, we should at least post signs noting that people should stay out of there. This is to limit our liability in there, and, and one way or another, make sure that the things that were not in accordance to our specifications or standards were removed as soon as practicable. Also touched base with the solicitor, she generally occurred with the advice from the insurance agent. I did call the homeowner, Ms. Molly, last week and advised her we would have this discussion tonight at the board, and also advised her that we would be posting keep-out signs. Originally, I told her we were gonna post the keep-out signs on Monday. I didn't get around to directing staff to doing that on Monday. They did go out this morning, though, and post those signs. They did have to repost a couple of them a couple of times, but the last time, staff was out there late this afternoon, they said they're still, the signs are still in place. So with that, as noted, the staff's original recommendation is that all the improvements should be removed. They don't comply with our safety standards. Anything that we do within a park, public park, is, is, we buy from manufacturers who build their equipment to certain standard specifications. We install them to very specific standard specifications, and we inspect them and maintain them to certain standards. And we find things that are out of, out of compliance or out of spec, then we fix them or replace them or remove them, so that they, we aren't creating liability for people who are using the parklands. So staff made that recommendation, as I also covered the recommendation from the insurance agent, that one way or another, even if it takes township staff, we should remove the, the property. I also came, talked to them about doing what I call a comp, the compromise, at, shown at the bottom, page three. We would have the recreation advisory committee, me with the homeowner and other neighbors from the area, look at, you know, what, ask the question, you know, what? the area, look at, you know, what, ask the question, you know, what should be done in this part of the parklet? It's just, it's just a wooded area, quote unquote. Really, we don't do any real maintenance in there other than making sure the paths stay clear. Responsibility for taking care of the paths. The one on the upper end is the homeowners. The one on the bottom end is the townships. But we would work to have the Recreation Advisory Committee work with the neighbors and see what could come back and have the RAC provide a recommendation to the board. We would also do in the interim, two things. Again, as the insurance agent has recommended, we would, again, limit access. We'll start by putting signs up. I think we put some caution tape up today. If people will abide by the signs, we don't need to do anything more than that. If people aren't going to abide by the signs, then probably eventually we'd have to put fencing around the equipment in the interim. We'd also get an independent certified playground inspector to go out there and give us a recommendation. If there are items in there that could stay, as they are, we want to know that. If there's things that could stay with some change, we'd want to know that. And if there's things that just aren't going to meet our standard for safety and safe use, then we'd want to know from that inspector what would need to be removed. From there, we would then probably be back at the board with the recommendation from the RAC and have a discussion about what should be done in that parkland, other than, you know, the other options that I've noted. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
No.
Elliot?
Well, I like the compromise idea. And I think that the offerings that we've had in the parks since it opened are relatively meager when you look at some of the other parks and that we could do better. And I think that we should proceed, see what we can do.
Okay. Is Ms. Molly here?
Like you said, my name is Chelsea. It's Mailei.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize.
It's butchered all the time. And I built my home on Gainor Drive 18 years ago this year. And in the time that I've lived there, the area behind my home, I was actually one of the first on the street. The area behind my home, what he's referring to, was woods in our view. So I just want you to know going into this, none of this was malicious. March of 2020, when COVID hit, I'm a full-time, single, stay-at-home mom. So we spent every day out back. And COVID was so rampant, we didn't, nobody went anywhere. And that led to collecting sticks and making a log cabin and getting to know neighbors and then going on bike rides and collecting more sticks. And when I say collecting sticks, we cleaned up these woods. They were awful. And the lower path that he referred to, that the township is supposed to maintain, has, in my time being there, never been well-maintained. I think they do come through about once a year and cut back some limbs. But even if they were out today, the lower path, it already has brush hanging over it. So you can't, you know, walk on it feasibly. And so through these last two years, myself thinking that the area was woods and a lot of the neighborhood children have really enjoyed playing in the woods. And I have taken upon myself to try to maintain the lower part of the path, along with my section as well. Last year, I had my section asphalted. You know, I really try to keep nice care of my property, along with the area behind it. A few months ago, a disgruntled neighbor had an issue with me over some property damage. So I can only guess where your letter came from. But I will say, out of maybe one disgruntled person, there are so many amazing neighbors that we've met through these two years that almost to the day, we will walk by and say, we love your yard. We love the kids attraction. I just love kids and I'm always out there playing with them. And so the things that we have hung or put up, you know, we've tried to do in a safe way. I'm not opposed to trying to work together to make it a better place or a safer place. There are questions about, I feel like I'm being very singled out in this. I took my kids on a walk around the whole path, all of Valley Vista. And it's, the older section especially, people just don't walk there anymore. There's parts where their path section, that we were told when we built our homes, we were responsible to maintain. There are sections where there are moss and grass covered that you can't even see the, you can't even see the path. There's parts that are covered in water. There's parts where the brush is so far over the path, you can't even walk on the path. And as you could see, you know, I have a shed that I built on the other side of the path because I had asked people from the township to come out last year to mark my property corners. And they said they couldn't find them. So I thought, well, it's easier to get forgiveness than permission. Everybody else put them on the other side of the path. And as you walk down the path, you can see that if you walk facing the actual playground and not trying to get people in trouble. But people all through the neighborhood put gardens, sheds, trash, lawn mowers, everything on the other side of the path. So again, I wasn't doing it to try to get anybody upset or frustrated. I wanted to do this as an outreach to the community, to like bless the community. I've actually put a lot of money into it, along with a lot of hard sweat and tears. Well, not too many tears until I heard you wanted me to take it out. But anyway, actually, and I'm not expecting her to speak or anything, but my neighbor that I brought with me is actually the one that lives directly behind me. I had made sure I got permission from all of the neighbors that surrounded us that, you know, it wouldn't affect their, you know, their view or they wouldn't be offended by anything. So they've actually all been, they just love it. I mean, I've never heard anything negative about it. I'm constantly told how creative it is and how fun it is and how they love that, you know, we just opened this up to the kids in the neighborhood. I think the signs are a little unnecessary because I'm pretty strict. Like, the kids in the neighborhood know they're not allowed to play on it unless we're out back with them because of safety purposes. So they just know better. And they're all, and I get it that somebody could come in and play on it. But my child could go play on your rock wall that's been missing, has broken pieces. It's been missing pieces for like at least a year now. So anybody can get hurt, you know, with anything. And all I'm asking is that, you know, you all reconsider. Maybe we can meet at a happy medium. I'd be happy to buy the property from you and just take care of it myself. But I'm sure that's not an option. So to maintain it for you, I'd be happy to do that. But when I was told by letter, I needed to reseed and remulch and all these things, that this area was never, I mean, just imagine the woods. That's what this area was. And we just cleaned up the woods. And did we add some color to it? Absolutely. But I would like to know that if we are told everything needs to go and we need to stay out, I would like to encourage the township to actually make it a parklet because it's never been that. And I think one of you had said, our park area doesn't really meet the standards of the neighborhood parks in this community. So it would be nice to see that we have a little bit more effort put in that spot. So I think that's about it. Thank you.
Ms. Mailei, thank you for coming in. And the board has reviewed the photos of how colorful it is. We all truly understand.
Thank you.
And could see the hard work that you did. And I can understand and how we have to follow rules and regulations as far as insurances. But I like the idea of working together, as my colleague, Vice Chair, has mentioned. I would like for our board to take some time, comments. Supervisor Trevino?
Yeah, I have mixed feelings. I mean, I quite understand why this came about with the pandemic and people, you know, being restricted to home and needing to provide options, entertainment options for families and children and so forth. And it certainly is, what you put in is visibly attractive because you painted all these tires. They're just not a bunch of old black tires spread out. But on the other hand, we are elected to serve the township citizens, all, everybody. Part of that responsibility is being cognizant of liability issues. I think the legal term for what you created here is an attractive nuisance. And an attractive nuisance is basically, she could certainly elaborate if it's necessary. Normally, you think of an attractive nuisance as on someone's private property, you know, like a swimming pool that's not fenced or something else that children are attracted to, children of the age that wouldn't be mature enough to understand the kinds of risks that are inherent in that kind of a opportunity. And that creates a legal liability on the part of the property owner that could be sued. And the person who sues would win if the judge declares the structure to be an attractive nuisance to children. Before the township became aware of this, we could have said, well, you know, we weren't aware of this. We didn't approve it. The person who put this installation in did not seek nor was given permission. But now that we're aware of it, we're now have the liability. It's public land. It's township land. And that's why our manager was talking about, well, yeah, you have recreation equipment on public property, but it beats all kinds of standards to avoid the attractive nuisance liability issue. So until I get some more clarification, especially if the board decides we're going to go and ask the Recreation Advisory Committee of our township to review it and have some expert evaluate, you know, the risks and safety of what's installed on that property, I'm not ready yet to make a decision. And the third point I wanted to make is township property is not open season. Meaning, what I mean by that is a property owner that has property that abuts, township property doesn't have, you know, a hunting license to put installations that they want on that public property. It doesn't belong to them. It belongs to the township, to all the citizens. Not so that an adjacent property owner doesn't have the right to take over part of the township property and say, I'm going to put in something for my use or, you know, my neighbor's use or whatever.
So may I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Does this mean that letters were sent out to everyone in the township who has done that? Not just myself?
I think this is too soon. I'm not sure if that's the intention of the township manager. But if it comes to the township's intention that other homeowners have encroached on public land and put structures on it, sure, yeah. We have to pursue that, too.
Like, I love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. I'm not trying to cause any disputes. But I just feel very singled out here for something that I meant for good. And I understand what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with it. I know it's not my property. So.
Thank you. Before I ask any other supervisor, we have the solicitor on line. Betsy Dupree? Can we hear, can we get your expertise on giving us some direction?
With respect to the overall proposal by the staff or with respect to the issues just raised?
The issue we just raised, that Supervisor Trevino just raised.
Well, I mean, certainly, there's always an argument that any one of us could create an attractive nuisance. I think what your insurance carrier has advised staff, and that was shared with me, is that when you have an organized park, we'll call, I'll pick on Burnell Road Park because that's close enough to me, that you have set up and you have followed all kinds of procedures in setting up, you have certainly have protections under your insurance liability. But when you have things that are either not of your creation or not otherwise structured by your parks board, you can create, as Mr. Trevino noted, an attractive nuisance. And I don't, I don't think you're at that point right now. I mean, I think where you are is stepping back and keeping, I think what I'm understanding, and the manager can correct me, is we're going to sort of go back to where we were, try to keep the space not in use with the signage, and give our Parks Committee and our staff a chance to do something with that and make it usable. Until then, other than the walking paths, which I believe were originally put in as part of the project, that area should be cordoned off until such time as that work is done. Am I wrong about that, Doug?
Yeah, no, you're correct. That's what I've recommended, that we have to limit access to what's there until it's inspected and found to either be safe for use or if we can't be made safe or it's not safe at this point, keep it cordoned off or remove it.
And I would just add further to the board. I think you've now put your insurance carrier on notice that if you don't do that, I think they have the ability to argue that you have no coverage. And one of the things that I did not research, but the manager and I certainly discussed, was we don't know how that would also impact your sovereign immunity claim that you have as a governmental entity. So in the short run, I think that's exactly what should happen until you can get a handle on the situation.
Thank you so much. I saw Supervisor Whitman?
So I'm going to take my mask off to talk. So first of all, I want to let you know, Casey, Chelsea?
Chelsea.
Chelsea, sorry. I would have done exactly the same thing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I say that before the public. I also say it's exactly what I did as a kid because I didn't know about rules and regs. And that's what we did when we were kids back in the 60s. We just roamed. You know, and we hung ropes off of trees and swung out over creeks and somebody probably broke their arm. Okay? I get it. Things have changed. And I get it that we have laws and we have liabilities. And I think you do, too. But I want to affirm your maternal and creative instincts. It's fine. Okay?
Thank you.
I love the idea of meeting with the Recreation Advisory Committee. In fact, if I run that committee, I would say, let's turn it into a little parklet. Let's find things that work in our state. Maybe the tires might not. I'm thinking, you know, would somebody step in and turn an ankle? I don't know.
Those were, those were placed there to actually build a climbing thing. It hasn't been, it was put on pause.
Yeah.
I'm not saying who placed them there, but that's what they were there for. So that's why they're not assembled. Yeah.
But whatever. I think, you know, you used gathered sticks to make, I did that once.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I can't.
Appreciate that.
You know, laws are meant to be obeyed and respected. But I think there comes a time when we can reexamine something and also be very serious about the liability that the township has.
Sure. I'm a former corrections officer. Like, I totally am a rule obear. I honestly, when I did this, it was not malicious. This was just, it's woods. It's been woods for 18 years. Let's go play, just like what you were saying.
I believe. Whose shed is it?
The shed is my shed.
Oh, okay. And that's probably something that I would say, it probably has to go, has to go. Because that's definitely-
And that's probably something I'd get an attorney for, just because of all the other sheds in the neighborhood that are, you know, right on the other side.
Or just move it.
But I get it.
But, you know, and if that's the case, if the case is such that there are others in the area, then yes, we will address everyone equitable, equitably. So I'm just in agreement of one of the suggestions here that we take it to the RAC Committee. and see what we come up, see what they come up with.
Supervisor Magruder?
I echo what people have shared here. It's a beautiful, like, structure.
Thank you.
And I know it's brought a lot of, you know, joy and happiness to the kids and probably parents who have seen them utilizing this space. Yeah, I definitely agree with being able to work collaboratively to determine how best we can preserve what we can preserve and/or improving the area in some manner such that, you know, people can find enjoyment from it. But, yeah, from a liability perspective and protecting the township, but also you, right? We want to make sure we're doing things to, you know, the letter of the law. And I guess when it comes to, we do have signs posted right now to keep out. I guess, I mean, reading what the insurance person, agent said, I mean, technically, if something, a kid went out, like, as we're talking right now, and broke their leg or something like that, we would be liable?
Well, the solicitor can chime in. She'll say, somebody can always sue you. Doesn't matter whether they have a case or not. Our issue is, you know, are we not paying attention? Are we not doing what we need to be doing? Our responsibility is to advise people that this isn't safe, they shouldn't be using it. We protect ourselves, like, as Dan had noted, giving them notice by those signs that they shouldn't use that area.
May I say?
We're fairly, we're in much better shape than we were if we didn't have the signs.
You are, but I'd like to make a comment on those. It's only 50 feet wide, and there were multiple signs put up and, like, yellow tape put up. And I'm concerned about it tarnishing my reputation in the neighborhood. I think how they were worded was very inappropriate. At the top, it says, you know, that you're supposed to stay out, and then at the bottom it says, play at your own risk. So that's just contradicting. And also, for the amount of signs, there's yellow tape going across everything, you know, I feel like it's a bit much. I feel like if there's something that you're concerned about a child being hurt on, maybe the zipline, nobody uses it without me, but for the case that maybe some child does, I'd be happy to take it down until we can, you know, meet and talk about other ideas. But I'd like you to readdress, like, these signs because nothing's going to be done immediately and...
Thank you. I just wanted to... I'm sorry. Supervisor Abrams?
I think we should make the signs appropriate to what we're actually doing. I mean, maybe even one or two signs there.
Thank you.
An example, well, I know what was done, but for example, if you go to Circleville Park, I was actually annoyed when I saw the school district sign saying, dogs not allowed on school district property and it's an open field. But the signs are spaced at about 100 yards apart. Now, should they be closer? No, because nobody is contesting this at this time. So I think the only reason for there to be more signs right now is until the situation's under control. And even then, I understand this, you know, it looks like it's, you're picking on one of the residents there. Another thing is that the rules have changed for the park equipment. Our oldest son, who has just turned 50, we lived in the borough when he was born, and he claimed to us last summer that his earliest memory was when he was almost two of me pushing him on this swing in this little parklet that is near West Hurley Parkway. And could we go look at it? And so, sure. So we drove over there, walked into the park, and that same piece of equipment can't be used anymore because the swing had this solid, I guess there was an animal of some sort that it was replicating, but I think that the safety of it was your head, if you swung incorrectly, your head could hit this object. And so those aren't allowed anymore on swings. And so his memory of it and mine were totally different, but it's because the safety has been improved. That should continue to happen. But I think we should, as early as possible, ask our Parks Committee to look at this and add some things to that park.
Yeah, I agree you need a sign. I don't disagree with the sign, so please don't hear me that way. I would just like one, like you said, maybe one. I mean, it's 50 feet, and it just feels very, I feel very, like I'm the only one being addressed.
We hear you.
Yeah.
I'm going to recommend that we, instead of making a, that we get a recommendation from our insurance agent or a solicitor on the signage if you want to change anything. I would say you should have a solid basis for what you put up there. What the sign says, or the wording that was suggested to me by the insurance agent and the township solicitor, so...
That's fine.
I mean, the point is to keep people out of there. So that we keep our liability at the lowest level possible. The insurance agent mentioned, you may want to talk to your own homeowner's insurance, your own homeowner's agent, and see what your liability is for the...
I'm fine.
For the stuff you've done back there, so...
Thank you, and we have to move on.
Thank you.
But thank you for coming in and helping us reevaluate everything.
Thank you.
So consensus of the board is that the RAC should take this up?
Yes. I'm sorry. Supervisor Magruder?
Yeah, I, the word equity keeps coming, you know, back to me. I appreciate you, you know, bringing that up. Never want anyone to feel, you know, singled out in our space and make sure that we're equitably enforcing, you know, our laws and rules and stuff in such a manner. And so, I mean, it is concerning that, you know, as I think historically about, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk about this, just government in the ways in which our government, specifically here in the United States, has taken over spaces, taken over property, taken over just different rights of our citizens and those deemed not even citizens. I definitely think we have a tarnished history with that. And so I'm all for people reclaiming things, reclaiming power, reclaiming property, and there's a way about doing that, going about doing that. And so I do think, though, that, you know, if there is a space where people are unknowingly utilizing publicly funded land or property, that notices need to be, you know, sent out for that too. Can't have this be patchwork.
Yeah, I would just note that not every case is their public land behind every house in this neighborhood. So we'll check the park, the park properties and any other properties that the township owns. And if we find any of those other situations, we'll notify those homeowners also.
Thank you. Did the neighbor want to speak?
No, I do, sitting here, I don't have a question or a question I have.
Come, come, come.
My name's Jean Sokolowski, and I live on that lower part of the path. I just realized or found out because of the surveyors and because I'm now buying the house that I was renting, that an area behind my house is the township's. So is the township responsible for cleaning that up? Because it's starting to get overgrown. I've been, you know, trying to take care of it, whatever, but it is on a slope. So is that, can I call the township or whatever if the...
Please, yes.
Okay, okay.
And we can look into that?
That would be a question for our Public Works Director, our Director of Public Works Operations.
Okay. Yeah, because the fences are...
Well, it's parkland.
Oh, parkland, I'm sorry. That would be me.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Alex, we got it. Thank you, thank you both for taking the time out. So any other questions? Saying none?
Thank you.
We're moving on. Next on the agenda is public safety. We have no items. Public Works Operations, there is no item. Next is Engineering, Planning and Zoning. Fees for zoning hearing board appeals. Director of Engineering, Planning and Zoning, Alex Dangren.
Hello, everybody. The fees for filing appeals for the zoning hearing board have not been increased since 2010. So I'm here to ask the board to reevaluate the fee structure. The zoning hearing board typically meets one to three appeals per year for sections 175 and 140 of the Patent Township Code. Our current fee is $360 for zoning or signed variance. The fee is, the rest of the costs have been subsidized by the township. The advertising fee alone in Center Daily Times is in excess of that cost. Looked into what other townships are doing, as noted in the agenda, Half Moon Township asks for $2,500 deposit, and then they refund the excess of funds back to the applicant. I would also like to note at this time that we can't actually charge for legal or expert fees per the Municipal Planning Code, so we can't, we would have to return, we would not be asking for those funds. Ferguson Township charges $500 for appeals and special exceptions and $300 for variances. And College Township asks for a $100 application fee and a $500 deposit. So with that, I wanted to ask the board if you have any questions for me or provide any guidance as to how we can move forward.
Do you have an idea in between all of these numbers that we have reviewed that would be reasonable for our township?
Well, we can do a similar structure to where we require a deposit and then refund the excess funds. Maybe not $2,500, maybe $1,000. Because it would have to cover the staff's time, as noted in the agenda. Sometimes Doug or myself attends these meetings, and we always have our Public Works Administrative Assistant taking notes and advertising and posting the property, so there's a lot that goes into, a lot of time.
Okay. Is there any Supervisor Abrams?
I don't know what the actual number should be, but I like the idea of the setting of deposit fee, then returning what wasn't used, and would move that motion that we do that.
Oh, you suggest the hundred amount?
I'm not suggesting the amounts. I'm just, the policy that we would have a deposit and that the money that's not actually used be refunded.
Refunded.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Then we have a discussion. Any Supervisor Magruder?
So it would be to whom to set the actual number?
Us.
Yeah.
Some part later down the road?
Yeah, that would be a separate motion. Right now, the eligible motion is just the policy, establishing the policy. And then the actual fee, we'll have to have another motion and discussion on a dollar amount.
We can do that today.
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Whitman?
How long is that period? How long does that take? How long would the money be held?
Usually the process, we have to schedule the first meeting, then the applicant comes in, pleads their case for why they feel that they should be granted the variance. Our solicitor has to write it. It takes about a month.
I was just concerned about interest. It's not a great sum of money, I don't think it is.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension? Now, the wonderful question of the amount.
I have a question for Alex.
Okay.
You say, or you suggest, a possible fee of $1,000. Do you have any sense, you and Doug have any sense of, from past zoning hearing board meetings, you know, is the cost going to run more or less than $1,000 on average?
Well, we can, like I said, we can, for the Center Daily Times, we have to pay for that. Staff time is included, posting the property. We can't ask for, like I said, Municipal Planning Code, we can't bill for solicitors' time, which is a majority of the cost. But between all those hours, it's probably a little underfunded.
It says we can't, we can't charge for legal advice.
Can't charge for legal advice. Or expert advice, right?
Yeah, but some of what the solicitor does is run the meeting. He does some other things on it.
So we can...
Yeah. I think over the years, it probably runs anywhere from $1,000. I mean, a really, one that didn't require much effort would probably be like $600 or something like that. Probably one that require a modest amount of effort might be a couple thousand.
Well, we've already voted in case you use it. If we don't use it, it can be refunded. So Supervisor Trevino?
Yeah, given that we have actually been subsidizing this whole process all this time, you know, with only charging $350, I don't have an issue with even establishing a deposit and know that in some cases we're going to subsidize that as well. We'll keep the entire deposit, but we'll have, you know, but the rest of the cost we'll have to absorb. So I think $1,000 is pretty reasonable. We can always revisit this fee structure next year or two years or, you know, sometime in the future if the staff comes back to us and say, look, you know, costs have gone this high and we're subsidizing to the amount of whatever, you know, 60% or 70% of the total cost we're subsidizing, then we can revisit the fee again.
Okay.
So I will move $1,000 deposit.
Second?
Second? Second? Discussion? Any other discussion?
I mean, I like Half Moons. I don't know how prohibitive this is, but, I mean, they have a $2,500 deposit and refund unused money. Why not just set a higher number as opposed to, like, you know, kicking it down the road and if we start understanding we're subsidizing them more, then we have to do another vote to increase it, just...
I think we should go with the Director of Engineering suggestion, since they have done these types of appeals. Supervisor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I answer Supervisor Magruder's question?
Yes.
A minimal cost to us for, you know, routine kind of thing would be, what, $600, $700 is what we heard from the manager say. If we're collecting $2,500 deposit and then we return $2,000 or $1,900 to the appeal, appeal, appealee, whatever the correct term is. I mean, why are we collecting so much money if it's not going to be necessary for the... So I guess I'm on the other side. I'm thinking, well, let's take the risk of having to subsidize some of these zoning hearing board meetings if the cost is going to run over $1,000, as opposed to forcing the person who's submitting the petition to write out a check for $2,500. For some people, that's a lot of money. And then having to return half or more than half of that deposit because it wasn't needed. That's my attitude.
Supervisor Whitman, I haven't heard from you. Are you finished? I'm sorry. Supervisor Magruder, are you finished?
I didn't have anything to say.
Were you finished? I'm so sorry.
No, but, I mean, meeting somewhere in the middle seems cool. $1,500. I mean, I know I support $1,000. Doug's saying it may go above that sometimes, and so I think $1,500 seems like a reasonable amount.
What we have on the, oh, Supervisor Abrams? I'm sorry, back and forth.
Hey, I don't know what the right answer is, but the $1,500 seems reasonable since we suspect that sometimes it'll cost more than $1,000, then we can return the rest. So I would say that that is more reasonable. So I would say that that is more reasonable. One question. I think that we're actually roped in here in the CDT thing because I think the state requires us to publish this in a newspaper.
Correct.
Does it specify whether it's the print edition or the online edition?
Yes, please, print edition.
That's what I thought. So as the online edition actually may have more readers than the print edition. And I think it has its own advertising that's added to it. I know we use the online edition. It looks like it has more advertising. And I think that's fine, the paper gets more money. But if we should advocate maybe at PSATs next year that we get that law changed in Pennsylvania to reflect the reality of what people are actually reading mostly.
Since there was a motion, we have to retract the motion, if I'm not?
Yes.
All right, going back, can we?
And Chair, I will amend my motion.
Thank you.
And, and set the fee, the deposit requirement at $1,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Biparts and shit. There you go. Commas. Listen in, America.
All righty. Thank you. Moving on, next on the agenda is stormwater education presentation. Director?
Okay. This is the MS4 program update for 2022. Tonight, we're going to cover stormwater, our MS4 permit, last year's permit activities, 2025 permit highlights, and future permit actions. What is stormwater? So these two pictures show the natural water cycle and the urban water cycle. Both are very similar, except for the rates of infiltration. The natural water cycle that is unurbanized, you see much higher infiltration than in the urban water cycle on the right, where there's much less infiltration. And I believe Supervisor Abrams has something to add regarding the water cycle.
Paul, with climate change, and I didn't believe that this was actually true about 30 years ago, but changed my mind. With climate change and the atmosphere being somewhat warmer than it used to be, the warmer the atmosphere is, the more water vapor can be accommodated in that atmosphere. And so each individual storm has more fuel as such to capitalize on. And that can actually accelerate quite a bit how much rain falls in these storms. And so the current rules that talk about 100-year storms that we have to still go by and we approve plans may not be adequate. Maybe it's a 50-year, maybe it's a 25-year storm. And so I think that should be a flexible thing that's done as, say, a team of people who study this all the time would come up with different numbers as we go through. Because right now, I think that some of the things we're building, we're almost building knowing that they won't handle what's needed. So that's, is that what you wanted?
Is the center region watershed different? The answer would be yes. As we probably know, the karst geology underlies much of the center region. The karst geology means that an area is underlined by limestone, which is geologic, which is a geologic formation that is highly permeable and prone to dissolution, creating caves and sinkholes. There are many watersheds where development depletes groundwater and base flow. The Spring Creek watershed area, however, show that no loss of recharge has occurred. And in fact, many may be increasing due to the highly infiltrative nature of some of the region's soils. Many other karst watersheds in the state act very different than the Spring Creek watersheds, and so generalizations cannot be applied to our area. These are some situations where stormwater runoff is a problem. When the volume of rainfall runoff is greater than infiltration or conveyance capacity, then we have a problem. Pollutants can be easily transported to streams, especially from impervious surfaces. You can see in the picture, that is a situation where the volume is greater than infiltration and pollutants can be easily transported into the, into the groundwater system. Same with that picture. Where does stormwater go? Many municipalities have combined stormwater and sewer. That is not the case here. We have separate systems. So our storm sewer system discharges directly into streams. How did we get here? The MS4 program started with the Clean Water Act of 1972, which established the structure to regulate pollutants discharged into the waters of the United States. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System is the permit program that controls point source and non-point source discharges into surface water of the United States. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as well as other states, are authorized by the EPA to administer the program through permitting and enforcement. In 1983, the governors of Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Virginia signed the original Chesapeake Bay Agreement, which was a simple one-page document. Over the years, it has morphed into a program with defined pollution reduction goals. And in 2016, a new Chesapeake Bay watershed agreement was signed. You might be asking, what is an MS4 permit? The acronym MS4 is short for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. From a practical perspective, it implies that a municipality or municipal entity has a stormwater permit and is required by the DEP and EPA to develop and implement a stormwater management program to reduce the contamination of stormwater runoff and prohibit illicit discharges. MS4 permits are issued for five-year cycles and requirements increase every permit cycle. These are maps showing comparison between the urbanized area in 2000, in the year 2000, and in the year, in the year 2010. You can see in the year 2010 that Bellefonte and Walker Township, Spring Township, all the area that's purple was added in 2010, as were multiple areas of the other municipalities. Permites must comply with six minimum control measures we refer to as MCMs. Number one is public outreach and education. Number two is public involvement and participation. Three, illicit discharge detection and elimination. Four, construction site runoff control. Five, post-construction stormwater management. And six, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The Joint Pollutant Reduction Plan we have created with all of our MS4 partner entities, model pollutant loads were looked at the, over the whole urbanized area. So we have to reduce our pollutant load by 10%, so we're looking, we have to do this by 2025, which is the end of our permit cycle. So we have a project right now identified on Meeks Lane. It is a stream bank stabilization project. That stream is, it's an unnamed tributary to Buffalo Run that runs along Meeks Lane. The Patent Township MS4 program last year, we received our final permit for July 2020 to June 2025. Actually, this past weekend, I conducted the rain barrel, I did a presentation similar to this for the Rain Barrel Workshop, which was last Saturday. The watershed cleanup day was in, was in April, so that was recently done as well. We do BNP and Outfall inspections every year. I'll be doing those with our engineering technician in the coming weeks. We've had zero non-compliance issues in the last annual report. In addition to this training, I will do a training with our road crew similar to this. These are some permit highlights for 2020 to 2025. We have to report any unanticipated non-compliance within 24 hours. If the substance is toxic, if the substance is toxic. When we modify or alter our BNP's, that might significantly change the discharge of pollutants. We need to also modify or talk to DEP about that. I'm currently in the process of taking our existing stormwater ordinance and updating it to match the model ordinance by DEP. So you'll see me come back with a new ordinance for that. Hopefully by next month, I'll have that back. And also take notice about, and I know it was mentioned before, car washing with soap and detergents. We can't have, go into our stormwater system. So future highlights, I already talked about the stream bank restoration project. We're going to evaluate further stormwater best management practices and upgrades and send more information out for our target audiences. And our MS4 partners are College Township, Penn State, Ferguson Township, Harris Township, State College Borough, and Spring Township. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, Supervisor Trina?
Question about car washing.
Yes.
The, the car wash on North Atherton Street? I mean, they use soap detergent and they use a lot of water. So how is that discharge addressed from the car wash? Just so that it complies with the MS4.
Well, they, A, they recycle their water. So they have large tanks underneath there that, what comes from their wash base goes back in and gets recycled, goes through a system to strip the soap out. Then whatever they do discharge, that goes to the sanitary sewer, not to the storm drains. So everything Alex has, has been talking about has to do with the storm drain system.
It doesn't go to the stormwater system, so therefore?
Yep.
It's compliant.
But when Alex is out, when they're out doing outfall inspections, that's what they're looking for, is are we seeing dry, discharges during dry periods? And if they do find those, then they have to investigate and track that back upstream and find out where it came from and make sure that whoever's causing it doesn't do that anymore.
I got you. Thank you.
I was just going to say, it all comes out in the wash.
Any other supervisor have a comment? Alex, thank you for his presentation.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is administration. Regional solar power purchase agreement discussion. Director of Finance Larry Fager. Larry?
Okay, Alex, could you put up the Q and A to inform the RFP with my, yeah, that. Okay. So just to give you a little background, we talked about this in our last meeting on, on May 11. And starting back in 2018, I met with the Center Region Finance Directors to talk about doing a project that was going to be a major solar project for providing solar electricity for, at that time, it was only, you know, the municipalities that were called. It has since grown to about 15 different organizations, which include the State College Area Water Authority and CADA and the school districts, they call it the school district. So it has grown. And in 2019, we formed a working group. And having gone through COVID and everything, now we're getting ready to send out a request for proposal on this actual development of this solar array to provide the electricity, the solar power that we will need for these 15 groups. So last month, or last meeting in May 11, there was a clue to your agenda. And included in this agenda was a guidance memo that I put out to guide you on these questions. And a presentation slide for presentation ideas. So what we need to do is to decide, not commit. Okay, I want to make that clear. We're not committing any electricity. We can still drop out of this project if the cost of the electricity is too much. We are committing to them a range of electricity that we want to use, a range of our electricity that we want to use in the RFP to get a price. So we want to kind of be realistic with the number, but we're not committing. So my recommendation had been that on the low end, we would go with 50% of our electricity and on the high end, we would go with 90%. Question that came up in the last, in the last board meeting on May 11 was, well, they, the people on the State College Area School District, some of them were more knowledgeable about economics than I am, what did they say? So I watched that meeting. And their response was their main concern was dealt with the risk of being involved in a long-term contract. If you think about any long-term, any long-term contracts that we get into right now are mainly loans. So our loans are 10-year loans. That's about as long of a contract as we get into. We have an out with that. If the interest rate is too high, we just go and we renegotiate a new loan to get a lower, you know, refinance a new loan and get a lower interest rate. In this, the, the risk is that we sign a contract that is 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, probably going to be more like 15 to 25, and probably 20 to 25. And we're locked into this ring. And what happens, and this is what was brought up by the members of the school board, is what happens in the long term if, if we're locked into a $5 cent per kilowatt hour rate and something happens that the cost of solar power goes from $5 cents to $3 cents? Is there a way that we can build in and out into this contract? So we're discussing that with, with Green Sky, our consultant. However, anytime we build in and out, that puts in a, moves the risk onto the developer and of course, the developer's going to charge us for that risk. So in order to get an out, we're not going to be paying $5 cents kilowatt hour. We're going to have to pay seven and a half cents because he's going to charge us for that risk of having the ability to get out of the contract prior to 25 years. So what I would like to do tonight is to come up with an answer to these five questions. One being, what is the expected minimum percentage of electricity that we're going to put into the RFP? And I'm recommending 50%. What's the expected maximum? And I'm recommending 90%, which interestingly are the numbers that were recommended by Congress. The school district went 40 to 85. The, does the township expect, does the township knows the expected amount of solar electricity we're going to commit? We don't know that now because we're going to wait until we see the prices. Do we expect to purchase or retain the renewable energy credits? Whether we purchase them or retain them will have an effect on the price, so we don't know at this time because we're going to see the prices with retaining them and with purchasing them. So we'll make that decision after we see the prices. And I don't have any other questions or concern other than we're interested in existing installation with availability because that will move the project quicker. If we have to wait to build from scratch, we're talking three years. If we have to wait to build from scratch, we're talking three years. If we get something, and Green Sky made a comment today in our project manager team meeting that there are, there are projects out there, even in Center County, that have capacity that we can buy. So I think the main question we need to know tonight is the minimum and the maximum that we want to put of our electricity we want to put in the RFP.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Supervisor Torino?
I move we accept Larry Peger's recommendations on these five questions.
Second on this side. Supervisor Whitman, second.
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor McGruder.
Yeah, my only discussion is, and maybe this is part of question five, but the one, the wonderings about installing solar panels on our, our buildings and how much electricity that would accrue, I guess. And obviously then it would be a, a negative then on how much we would need to sort of like purchase. I would still have questions about what, what that capacity might look like, but yeah.
Okay. Well, I will, I will meet with Doug and we'll develop that. And before we commit to the amount that we're going to put in the SP, SPPA, we'll, we'll definitely add that up.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
Good question.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Larry.
All right. Moving on, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Doug?
Just one item, minutes for the last meeting.
All right. Supervisor.
It could be May 11th.
All right. Supervisor Torino?
I, I notified Doug there was a typo, so I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting as, as amended.
Okay.
Or as corrected, I guess I should say, as corrected because it was just a correction.
All right. Supervisor Abrams.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes passed. Thank you. Moving on. Next on the agenda is the managers' report. Doug?
Thank you. First up in correspondence, some information that came from DEP about recycling in Pennsylvania. Pretty nice little fact sheet, if you're looking for, you know, what are benefits of recycling? Talks about the benefits and that accrue to the, to township or not to the township, but the Commonwealth for taking things and not sending them to landfill, making, reusing them for, for new materials. So includes that. Also that PSATs had provided a summary sheet for legislative priorities for this year. I think if you read through that, Elliot, somewhere it probably talks about legal advertising. I think at the top of page three there, provide legal advertising options for municipalities other than the traditional print news. So that is part of their, their program already. Under announcements, Cog is doing a pilot food waste drop-off site at the Bullsburg Farmers Markets starting in June. If you're interested in participating, you do have to register. If you go to Cog and, or talk to Shelley Mato there at Cog, she can give you, get you that information. And for the last time, I will announce that summer trash schedule is moving from a seven o'clock start to a six o'clock start. So if you're one of the early morning folks.
Doug, I have a question about that. Does that apply to the recycling pickup as well?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All pickup. So if you're like me, where the early morning, where the recycling guys come before eight o'clock.
Yeah.
You know, I'll have to get up a little earlier. Now, the trash guys don't come until later in the afternoon, so we're good there. Township schedule, we're closed May 30th for Memorial Day, July 4th for Independence Day. We're still on schedule to launch our new website in late June. And that's the end of my report.
All right.
Well, let me just one, let me back up. I made a note. We did do the gypsy moth spraying out in the Grayswoods area last week on the 20th. And also have already been getting reports from a few folks about gypsy moths showing up in other areas. So we'll do what we did last year. We'll keep track of where we get those reports. And then in the fall, we'll do an egg mass survey in the areas that we find with high concentrations of egg masses. We'll schedule for spraying in next spring. So, but they are showing up in places. Somebody said we even got them in the trees out front here, so. But we'll see. Hopeful that the fungus in the soil does its thing and kills them off like it did most of them last year. That's a little bit weather dependent, so pray for rain for the next three weeks.
All righty.
End of my report.
All right. Next on the agenda is committee reports. Is there any supervisor?
Wait. I have my hand raised.
I am so sorry. We, we didn't, we didn't see you. I'm so sorry.
So what I'd like to know is what kind of food waste is going to be dropped off? This sounds like something I would desperately be in favor of, but it's the first time I've ever heard about it. So could somebody give me, you know, like two sentence description of who participated in that and whether it's just businesses or whether it's restaurants or whether it's people like us?
No, it's, it's open to residents. The program is accepting kitchen waste only, no yard waste.
Ah, so this would be what we would generally call composting, but composting of kitchen waste. And can institutions like the Village of Penn State participate in this?
I would suggest that they call Shelley Mato at the council of governments and her phone number is 814-234-7198.
And what was her last name? Can you spell it?
Mato. M-A-T-O.
Okay. Thank you. They are very interested in finding something like this and I will ask the folks here to call tomorrow.
Yeah. Joan, it's, it's Betsy Whitman. A heads up, this is a drop-off program, so it's not a lock-up program.
Okay, but it will be at the Bullsburg Farmers Market.
Right. The idea being that several people will already be going there to do their shopping and they can just bring their weekly compost pile as they shop.
Okay. My friends will be interested in hearing about this, especially at the church. Thank you very much.
Pilot program. We're excited.
Thank you so much and thank you. We're so sorry we didn't see your hand raised earlier. Thank you.
That's okay. Don't worry about it. What's well, that ends well.
Okay. Thank you. Where was I? Oh, committee reports. Is there any supervisor that would like to add to their committee report at this time? Supervisor Abrams?
I did submit a specific report about the, the land use committee, but the basic thing that we heard from the planning director is that the next comprehensive plan is being done on a slightly different basis than before. It used to be that we would get the comprehensive plan and it would almost be viewed by people as being the law, that we, we can't expand our boundaries, we can't do this, we can do that. And it's more of a, a generalist type approach that is being done now. And we'll have to see how this turns out, but it'll seem less rigid, but maybe more helpful.
Okay. Any other supervisor? On the executive board committee, we went into the executive session to discuss IT study. And we also, due to the lack of action items, the executive board decided to cancel the general forum meeting on May 23rd, 2022. Seeing there is no other committee report, moving on, other businesses, business? Doug, do we have anything?
No, ma'am.
Supervisor, any supervisor, Supervisor McGruder?
Am I able to say something?
Yes.
I told myself I wasn't going to freestyle this and I'm not going to freestyle this because I think these issues deserve sensitivity and discernment, reflection. But I've, I've been at a loss for, for words, clearly. I had hoped to have something more coherent for this meeting regarding the state of our world, state of the United States, state of our Commonwealth. But I was tossing turn last night and nothing, nothing was, was coming to mind. So hopefully I'll have something in the future, but I think right now, alls I have to say is wake up. Wake the hell up. And I say that with the knowledge and awareness that many of us, many of you have the privilege to wake up. I think the numbers are still rising, but last time I checked, 18, 19 children?
19.
Will not be waking up. I believe two of the teachers are not waking up. I learned that, I believe Thursday was their last day of school. They will not be waking up. Black bodies who went to a grocery store, I think they woke up to get groceries, to probably go home and feed their loved ones, feed their neighbors. They will not be waking up. Asian brothers and sisters who went to church to celebrate, to worship, to be in communion. Many of them will not be waking up. And so I, as a millennial, and then we get a lot of crap. But as a millennial, I'm a keenly aware that there's been a lot of things happening in my lifetime that has caused me to wake up. There's generations below me that a lot has been going on in their lives that has caused them to wake up, so much so that the burden has contributed to many not wanting to wake up anymore. And they don't wake up anymore because of suicide amongst other things. And so I don't want to go too further down this because again, I do want to have some more coherent, cohesive words, but I, I am really challenging people out there watching in this room across our nation, this willful ignorance is not sustainable. Your inaction has consequences. And to our very most vulnerable, our children, those are individual suffering amongst others. And so I ask, just wake the hell up and do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McGruder.
Thank you for putting into words what a lot of us are feeling, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Havens?
I agree with that and some other things that I think we do need to wake up about. I believe in Second Amendment rights, but I also believe in the fact that when you get a driver's license, you have to take a test and you have to show that you can drive. And to be a teacher, you have to get certified. So many things have to be certified. And I think that responsible purchases of weapons of destruction, you should get some certification that you're sane. I don't know who does that, but I think more of it should be done. And I also think our nation needs to devote more attention to mental health.
Any other supervisor at this time?
Am I, am I permitted to make a comment?
Up to you.
Ms. Joan, go right ahead.
Thank you. If, if teens and people who are under 21 are not responsible enough to drink properly, we don't let them drink until it's 21. And it seems evident to me, you know, it's staring us in the face that people that are under 21 should not be able to carry guns out into public places. And maybe they shouldn't be able to own guns at all. And I'm sure there are people here that disagree with what I just said, but I don't think that young people at that age are mature enough in their minds, in the development of their brain to know what's the proper limit for using firearms. And that's it. Thank you for letting me make my comment.
Thank you. Supervisor.
This age thing came up 50 years ago during the Vietnam era when people said that why should you be, why can you be drafted at 18 to participate in wartime efforts but not vote till 21? I never really saw that resolved, but I think you can still join the military at 18. And so I'm not really sure that there's a hard and fast line, but really I think that even if you're 70 or 80 and you go in and say, I need to buy a gun right now, there should be some mechanism, no, you can't do this right now. If it's a certain type of thing that generally is not used for hunting, that's all.
It's not a both, it could be a both end instead of an either or. But in the army, young men and women have commanding officers and they tell them what they're allowed to do and what they are not allowed to do. And people like the shooter in Texas don't have anybody to tell them what to do or what not to do, except perhaps a grandmother who got killed. So, you know, I realize that what you said is true, but I also realize that the circumstances are different and maybe that's not a comparison to be made.
Okay. Thank you. I would just like to reflect on where we are. Thank you to Supervisor McGruder, who spoke from the heart. Supervisor Abrams, thank you. And just for a moment, can we just think of the family? And that our hearts and our prayers and go out to them and their community and for us as a human beings, as human beings, treasure what life means. So without further ado, I would like to move on. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would like to thank everyone for their comments. This meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you. Amen to what?